Yes, sir.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the City Council Work Session this morning for September 11th. We've got a couple items on the agenda, the Animal Rescue League and Civil and Human Rights Commission Annual Update. Mr. Manager, I'll quickly kick it over to you, but let's get going.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Good morning. So, yeah, we have an opportunity this morning to talk about our Animal Control and Animal Rescue League partnership. We have the new facility that is nearing completion, and as such, we've been in some lengthy conversations with our partners about how to operate that new facility. So, we asked them to come in and speak with the council about all the great services that they provide for our community. Matt Anderson, our Deputy City Manager, is our liaison to this agency, so I asked him to kick off the meeting. Matt?
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, County, Members of the City Council. If you're a gardener like Linda, it's more than just a good morning, it's a fantastic morning because you've finally got some rain and you're not going to be hauling hoses and sprinklers around your yard this week. So, thank you for joining us. We've been working on this new agreement with Animal Rescue League, ARL, for about a year. The new facility was more than about just a new building, a shiny new facility that's three times the size of our current facility. It's about enhancing service delivery to our residents, so you're going to hear the ideas behind that beyond just the brick and mortar of the building. You all got a chance to tour that building about a month ago. We're about ready to turn it over to ARL finally, so I think you'll be excited with what Tom and his team have to share. Over this last year, I think every one of you have brought to our attention citizen concerns over service delivery gaps, so I think what you'll see is that beyond the new building, we're going to address both shelter services and field services with new service enhancements, a new fleet strategy, which frankly, we didn't have a fleet strategy. Ten years ago, when we entered into a contract with ARL, we gave them our fleet and said good luck, and nobody ever had a plan for upgrading that fleet and just the normal replacement. So, we're bringing that back into our fold and using our economies of scale to manage the ARL fleet. And then, Tom will touch on, in the coming months, addressing some ordinance and policy issues that will make, again, that service delivery enhanced for our citizens. So, I'll turn it over to Tom. This has been, this has been a big operation. It may seem like, oh, it's just an ARL, Animal Control Agreement, just, you know, get it done, but I think we've probably had six different city departments working on it, and Tom's team, Meg and Joe Branstadter and Jim Hoff have been instrumental in getting us to this point, so this is the culmination of a lot of people's work, and Tom will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Matt. Mayor and council, this has been quite a journey. That's all I can say. I'd like to do some introductions here. This is Joe Stafford. He's our Director of Animal Services. This is the guy that's going to be officeing at that new facility. Rick Clark, needs no introduction, right? Everybody knows him. And Chris Henderson, who's our General Counsel, has been working very closely with Meg and other departments on kind of putting together what this agreement's going to look like. But, like I said, long journey. We've been doing this for a long time. So, just a brief agenda here, a few things that I'm going to go over is the, like Matt said, new shelter operations, field services efficiencies, the true benefits of this partnership, additional program enhancements in both ends of the leash, which I really want to emphasize today, and if you got up to KCCI this morning, you will see that actually, both ends of the leash was talked about in two different stories that they did this morning. So, more on that in just a minute. What do I do here? You?
Basebar?
Okay, I won't go through this history. We did this a year ago when I was here, talking to you before. But just a quick reminder that we started off with housing services for the city back in 2005. We started contracting with our field services in 2010. We have entered into a bit of a 10-year agreement covering shelter operations and field services in 2019. But dropping down to this most recent, we plan to move in December 4th, 2023, and that's drop the balloons, that's really an exciting time for us. That's when that new animal facility that you've put together for us and made possible is going to open up for business and really cement this, this partnership that the Animal Rescue League and the city has. Okay, so what's new? What are you going to see that's different? Well, one of the things you're going to see, we've talked about in the past, and with budget cuts and things, this really was not possible, is you're going to see new business hours. You're going to see us open from 9:30 to 6:30, Monday through Friday, 9:30 to 5:30 on Saturday and Sunday, which is new, okay? The Sunday is new. Current business hours, 9 to 5, Monday through Saturday, so we will have increased hours outside of normal business hours, making it easier for the residents to access for reclaiming their pets and to do, of course, the new adoption services provided by the ARL. So now, even though there are some adoption opportunities within the city of Des Moines now, here and there, this will be a concentrated adoption program that we'll be operating out of that facility, and we'll be, we'll be covering the costs of that, quite frankly, because what's not reflected in adoption fees is the fact that, you know, a pet will come in as a stray, go through a holding period, during that holding period, there may be some vaccinations and a few things that happens along the way medically, but when it's being prepared for adoption, then it has to be spayed or neutered. You know, any other problems that, you know, we were treating before have to be addressed, any, you know, infectious diseases, any, anything like that. And we figure that, on average, we spend about $600 per pet, putting them up for adoption. And I, I don't want, we didn't want to pass that on to the city, quite frankly. You will notice that we have sometimes Name Your Price Adoptions, which we've found very effective for the pet and the people of our area. So, again, we did not want to have that have to be set by ordinance. So, this is, hopefully, you're recognizing this is a very good thing. I know it's something the city has wanted, is adoptions out of that facility, now it's going to happen. You have provided veterinary surgical services, so there's going to actually be a surgical suite down there. The Animal Rescue League is providing a digital x-ray machine and the surgical tables and all of those types of things to outfit that very professionally. So, that's a new thing that you're going to see, which is a little difficult when you did the tour, but when you do the next tour, you're going to see all these things actually come to fruition. Community outreach and education that's been provided by the Animal Rescue League will find its main home out of this facility. That includes pet pantry, vaccination, spay, neuter, microchip, wellness clinics, and more. And the person, Josh Fiala, that oversees that program, his direct supervisor is Joe, so Joe helps build out that program from that facility. So, that means lots of attention to this new facility. It's going to be a happening place. I mean, where you saw the, what we refer to now as the old shelter, not a lot of room, not a lot of parking, not a lot of, kind of a atmosphere that you could come and do things, you're going to be seeing a lot of activity at this new facility, very positive interaction with the, with the community. So, field services, what are you going to see with field services? We're going to continue to prioritize public safety, welfare, and animals, and proactive approaches to pets in the community. Joe, as you've heard me say before, Joe Stafford has got decades of experience, and he applies that, lives that, breathes that every day, and pumps that into that program in field services. There's going to be seasonal business hours to match seasonal demand, I think that's a real, that's something else that Joe brought to the table, makes a lot of sense. Let's, let's have, there is some seasonality to the, to the needs, so let's concentrate on spring to fall differently than, say, fall to spring. So, he's going to be addressing those seasonal business hours as well. Continue a response to emergencies after hours, so we'll have somebody available, and just a reminder that if an animal is hit by a car in the middle of the night, we do have a veterinarian available, but that individual that is on our staff is going to consult with the ASO, determine whether the animal needs immediate attention. If it does, we've, we've been taking them to Blue Pearl, and we've been paying the cost of that so that they can get overnight care, okay? And that can be IVS too. I'm not, we're not limiting to Blue Pearl, IVS in Des Moines as well. The point being is that the animal gets professional care immediately and all night.
Do you typically see that?
Oh, through that program, Joe, a couple months, two, three a month, or more often?
That's probably fair when we talk about the ones that get sent over to Blue Pearl. We'll pick up probably a couple hundred animals that have been involved in some kind of unfortunate circumstance over a year where, you know, it needs medical care.
Okay.
Every month over to Blue Pearl is probably managed.
Yeah. But you can imagine that the bills on those are a little more than $600 usually, typically. Okay, we're also going, Joe's also going to be instituting a new patrol district model, and that's going to mean increased efficiencies, responsiveness, and reduced environmental impact. The reduced environmental impact basically means fuel and wear and tear on the, on the vehicles that Matt had mentioned are now going to be city vehicles. Joe's people would be in northeast Des Moines, and their very next call could be on southwest Des Moines, where, when in fact, there might have been a call just right in northeast Des Moines that needed attention and could have been taken care of. So, this is going to be a huge impact on efficiencies and responsiveness. We are getting the vehicles equipped with DMPD mobile data terminals. Want to thank everybody that's in the room and beyond on this process, again, efficiency with DMPD, on basically getting dispatch calls so that our ASOs can manage them in the field. Very appreciative that we've been working so well with them, and they've been making it possible for us to have that as well. We're going to continue deceased animal removal. We're going to be using city equipment, and I am told, I haven't seen, but I hear some of that's pretty, pretty impressive about how we will better be able to pick up particularly deer. City-owned fleet, as Matt said, to save acquisition, fuel, and maintenance costs.
You say animal removal. Are you talking about everything from dogs and cats to deer to whatever?
Correct, Mayor. We're talking everything deceased that is not on public, on roads and byways that should be covered by the DOT. Correct, Joe? Okay. Yeah. So, we get the, we're going to continue the, the job of deer.
So, we won't call Public Works anymore to take a deer off of 42nd and Ingersoll, for instance?
Yeah, you'd be calling through dispatch. Now, Joe knows a lot more about this, this part, but yes, you'd be calling dispatch, and that would, would go out to our ASOs.
Okay.
Okay, the true benefits of this partnership, and I really want to emphasize this entire situation. The Animal Rescue League, as you can imagine, I would hope you would imagine, is doing this partnership primarily because we see an opportunity to further our mission through this. Our mission may not be picking up dead deer, okay, or dead raccoons, but it is embedding our animal service officers and our community outreach people into the community where it's needed, and that is keeping pets and families together. And the programs are designed to keep pets and families together. It's called both ends of the leash. When you think about it, both ends of the leash, we're helping out both ends of the leash, the people and the pets, and we can do that together, and that's what this whole partnership is about, so that you get to know us, you get to know what we're about. We take care of your dead deer and maybe that, that dog that's running and causing alarm at the elementary school. We do that, but we also want this partnership to take us to the level of effective ordinances and policies designed to enhance compliance. Are we doing everything we can do right now to enhance compliance, or are we treating everybody, every pet owner somewhat as they're doing something wrong immediately? We can provide necessary resources instead of punishment. We can help residents meet animal welfare needs. We can help residents address behavior concerns. We can educate residents on at-large issues, all of those things, and that's key to this partnership. That's what's important to the Animal Rescue League. That's why we've frankly stuck it out, okay? Through the ups and downs of the partnership so far, getting to this point, this is what it's all about. Shelter diversion saves taxpayer money. The idea is not to sweep animals off of the streets and into this facility, even though it's a very nice facility. The idea is to use those services only when that's the appropriate answer, whether it's a public safety issue or it's some other issue that's going to be better addressed by going through the shelter services. Otherwise, let's get those animals back in, to the home that they know and are loved. We could, once again, I cannot say this often enough, we can ensure public safety by working together, we can have significant cost savings to the taxpayer, and we do that with ARL's community outreach programs at no cost to the city. We figured that while we're building this agreement, we basically were looking at that contribution on the Animal Rescue League side, and it's about 75 cents put in for the animal, from the Animal Rescue League to each dollar that the city's putting in. That's a pretty good return. So, additional program enhancements, these are things that we have talked about within this multi-department discussion, and I want to thank Matt Anderson in particular for putting together a multi-department discussion. It became evident to everybody immediately that animal services is not just the police department. Animal services cover so many different departments within the city that everybody needs to come together in order to have the best decisions made. So, we've been talking about initiating trial programs of a no late license fee for first-time offenders, which basically says if you didn't get your license in the first four months of the year, then you don't have to pay a $50 fee when you're coming to pick it up. Let's, let's get you licensed at that time, let's move on forward. Let's revise that pet licensing program to move towards fully online processes, third-party solutions, make it very simple for the residents, use license anniversaries as renewal date, so we're not constantly having people say, hey, I just came into this situation in June, that's a half a year that I'm having to pay full year license fees. All of those conversations can go away. And then consider, consider multi-year licenses to coincide with longer vaccination periods, which is keeping up with the times, okay? Three-year cat vaccinations wasn't heard of at the time that the ordinance was made, now it is. You know, multi-year rabies vaccinations within dogs wasn't heard of in, at the time the ordinances were made. So, let's keep up with the times, make it simpler for our residents. And then an ask for council is to authorize the city manager to pursue these initiatives and come back to the Council of Recommendations by January 8th, 2024. So, that's what I'm asking of you today. I'm asking that we get a commitment to pursue those and a number of other issues. Councilwoman Westergaard, we had talked about what we could do with dangerous dogs and things like that. It's leaning into these opportunities, and we just need to have your support in doing that. We've proven ourselves. I feel like we've proven ourselves as the experts and the ones that can, can drive things forward. I just threw this up because this, once again, we had Phil Arcal, somebody that has been, started the link between animal abuse and human violence, creating safer communities through the species-spanning partnerships. We had him at the Animal Rescue League just last week, did an excellent job. He talked in the afternoon, in the afternoon to law enforcement, mental health individuals, and talking about this whole link situation. Joe and I have known Phil for many, many years. He's been doing this for 40 years. We've known, I've known him for that entire time, Joe, not too much behind that. We consider him, and he's considered an international expert on the subject. And the reason I wanted to show this was a slide that he showed right here, and it's a one-welfare model, okay? It's basically taking the importance of animal welfare, human well-being, environment conservation, all into one category, and we would have the opportunity to, this is once again, both ends of the leash, and those that are in the situation, impacting the situations around domestic violence, around many, many of the situations that the community has to deal with. But I just want to toss it up there to show that families are four-legged as well as two-legged. That's been proven time and time again, and when animal services, when, when the city of Des Moines can have animal services lean into that reality and actually come out as a leader in the country for this type of thing, or jumping on board to the other communities that are doing it across the country, you can have a people-safe and pet-friendly environment that will draw people to Des Moines and just make the ones that are here feel so much better about their investment into animal services within the city. So, I'm going to turn it back over to Matt so we could talk about next steps and timeline before I leave. Is there any questions?
Yeah, well, you, the, the pet licensing changes make a lot of sense to me. You had a bullet point referencing other ordinances and policies.
Yes.
And I was wondering if that was alluding to anything specific that you've identified from a best practice perspective. I know, you know, we've implemented trap-neuter release, and I think that, that's been a pretty successful implementation, and has been a benefit to the community.
Yes.
Are there, are there other, other policies and ordinances that you would recommend that we, we be considering to improve?
Well, there are a lot. There are a lot of things that I think would, would really bring Des Moines into current thought processes, so there's a long list, quite frankly. And it doesn't all mean ordinance changes, that's the other. It could be just city policy changes on how we view these types of things. You know, let me give you this example, and this, this we're not prepared to roll out, but somebody's pet gets out of the house, maybe the construction person left the, left the gate open, you know, dog slips out, gets picked up by Animal Control. Currently, we have the licensing, we got the reclaim, we got, maybe we have the late fee, we have $150 to $200 worth of reclaim fees, okay, to get that pet out. We're talking about how do we, how do we help someone get a reduced license fee, which means spayed or neutered, okay? So, maybe we spay and neuter that pet before it leaves, vaccinated, it gets a parvodistemper vaccination so we can control diseases, species diseases among the community. How about if we just give that pet back to somebody, not give it back, there will be some fees involved, but how about if it goes back to the person, basically how we would like to see the pet, the community would like to see the pet already there, not able to reproduce if it gets loose, vaccinated, all of those types of things, from public health standpoint, all of these things. Let's provide that instead of a punitive approach to reclaiming your pet, because the alternative now right now, if somebody doesn't afford, can afford to reclaim a pet, they walk away, leave it with the, the city, then becomes the Animal Rescue League. That's costly, and it tears the family up. It doesn't mean that people are never going to get another pet, they're going to get another pet, and we may repeat the process. So, it's, in answer to your question, it's all of those kinds of things of looking at the ordinance and determining what do we want to accomplish? And once we come up with that answer, work backwards toward the solution. Like I said, some of those will require ordinance, some of them just policy changes.
And I assume that one that you gave the example of is top of mind because that would be a priority policy change, or, or there others that would, would rise above that?
Yes. The country right now, not just Des Moines, is dealing with a dog situation that we haven't really put our finger on. It has to do a lot on the Animal Rescue League side and many other communities, that was one of those stories that came up on KCCI this morning, is the lack of affordable pet-friendly housing. Pet rents and those types of things are causing people to surrender their dogs at astronomical numbers, okay? So, anything we can do that can divert that population away from current facility or future facility will be a good thing for everybody, the residents and the city as well.
So, that's maybe a pet-friendly housing?
Yes. Yeah, so that, that's kind of the offshoot, okay? What are we trying to accomplish? We're trying to divert responsibly as many dogs out of the shelter as possible. How do you do that? What are the, what are the factors? Examine the factors. Take a look at whether it's trends or just something like a bump, okay? We all would like simple answers to things, so when this started happening at the beginning, we frequently heard, well, it must be all the pandemic dogs that were adopted are now coming back. Partially, but is that all of it? No, no. There were so many factors that everybody with an opinion basically was right. There were so many factors that everybody with an opinion basically was right, because it was all factors coming together. But we have to get ahead of it because now it's looking like a trend. Yep, thank you.
Tom, two questions.
Okay.
Are, are there cities that you're modeling the Des Moines changes after?
Yes.
What, what, what cities are doing a great job on this?
Joe, what would you say are some of the highest ones? I've got kind of my list, but what are, what are you seeing as the leaders?
I, I mean, I think we're partners in this movement, it's called Human Animal Support Services. So since the beginning of the pandemic, there are about 56 cities across the country that knew that things had to change initially as a result of the pandemic, but then coming out of that. So there has been many, many initiatives that has grown out of this group, and I tend to look at those 56 cities as best practices and then realize that this is Des Moines, Iowa. And Des Moines, Iowa needs a Des Moines, Iowa solution. So picking and choosing out of those partner agencies that have implemented these programs, tested them, modified them, retested them, what those best practices are so we can bring the best solution to Des Moines, using this new facility as the opportunity to start that and jump that off is going to be critical. This will be the fourth new facility that I opened in a private public partnership like this, and it is such an opportunity to really engage the community in a different way and then look at these 56 cities and even beyond that, and then bring those ideas back here where we can have a conversation about what is the best solution for Des Moines, Iowa, going to be, and not only to establish best practices in this city, but it's an opportunity to establish best practices across Iowa as well, as I've said many times. I mean, for the capital city, we should be leading the charge here in Iowa. This is a unique opportunity.
And is there a city or two that you like especially that?
Well, what really grabbed me was the small community of Cabot, Arkansas. It is amazing. I mean, it is, they basically took their animal services and put them into the community sheltering process where you come to one facility, whether you're reclaiming your pet or needing some other types of human services, and you get that all in one place. I love that model. I love that model. This is not a go here, call this, do this, do that. It's looking at it in its entirety. Whether that's going to fit for Des Moines, I, I can't tell you. I don't know. But like Joe said, we are in a unique position if we work together on these ideas to make Des Moines a leader in these types of things and have people ask that same question. What do you like about across the country? And somebody say, Des Moines, Iowa. Love what they're doing in Des Moines, Iowa. They're leaning into their residents and the pets and realizing it's all one family.
Tom, second question. So there was a spike in adoptions during COVID, and has that dropped off some or a lot, or has it stayed steady? What, what would be your just 30,000-foot view of that?
Yeah, well, I tell you, that is one area that we are different than the rest of the nation in that our adoptions are continuing to maintain, okay? So we're getting our pets adopted. It's a little more of a challenge getting the pets out into the areas, but we're still having the adopters. Many other parts of the nation, they have the numbers and they just don't have the adopters. It's leveled out. It's not the craziness. When I walked into the shelter in, in May of 2020, I'd never seen the shelter that empty. And it was a wonderful thing, I'll tell you. That's a wonderful thing. People were actually begging for animals to adopt. That's an unusual situation. But to answer your question, we still are getting the adoptions, but we work hard for it, you know, we work hard for it.
Yeah. You, you see an awful lot of people with dogs out on our trails, which is a, a good thing to see, so.
You see dogs in our community everywhere, and you can see that it is, you know, it is so integrated into Des Moines, it's happening. So let's embrace it and embrace it together and minimize any challenges that that might create. Linda?
Ask the city manager to pursue the initiatives and then come back to council. And I would also like to add to that puppy mills are a big thing in Iowa, and we have very, very lax laws. And I know that you've lobbied up at the Capitol, but you need help.
Yes.
I think you need, I think we all need to be contacting legislators, maybe our governance people could step in, but we need to do something to tighten up those puppy mill laws in.
Yes, this is a federal issue. There are a couple of federal bills moving through now that need to ha, need to hear from you folks. That would be very powerful. And yes, we are connected on that end, and quite frankly, due in a large part to the efforts of, again, another of Joe's supervisory individuals, Robin Dobbernecker, who is our coordinator for animal welfare intervention. These situations are happening, that you're seeing these, these closing at a rapid rate, and they need the Animal Rescue League to help with that situation. So yes, thank you. If you can support the efforts on Goldie's Act, currently is how it's named, contact our congresspeople, that will make a huge impact. Thank you. Okay. I'll turn it back over to Matt. Thank you very much. Exciting future.
Thank you, Tom. So you've, you've seen our next steps up here, and the next time you'll see this will be at your October 2nd city council meeting to both approve the agreement and then, as, as Linda had directed to Scott, to, to pursue those licensing programmatic potential ordinance changes and come back to you with a recommendation. One thing you're probably asking as you saw this is, hey, that's all great, Matt, how much is it going to cost, right? I mean, there's, we, we know there's going to be an expense to this. Your current contract is approximately $900,000 annually with ARL. When, I was kind of struck and made note, when Tom said that they stuck this out, he said to be stuck it out, the root, one of the roots of them sticking it out to continue to pursue their mission with us as a partner, is they've been losing hundreds of thousands of dollars on our contract, and that was never the intent. So whether we had a new facility and no enhancement, our contract was going to need to go up to make them whole. That was not part of the agreement. So you've got a $900,000 contract today. The proposal is approximately 1.4 million for the enhanced services and to make ARL whole. So we'll give you the more detail behind that when, as, between now and then. Feel free to come forward with any questions you may have. The blue letter will lay out those services in a little more detail than, than what, than what Tom did, so that you can see what you're actually getting for your money. But I think what you see is a, a true partnership. It sounds a little cliche. You hire a lot of contractors and vendors to supply services to the residents. This one feels a little more, more cohesive than that. It really is a, a true partnership with ARL and city staff. So we're excited to get this new agreement. The new agreement will be a 10-year agreement, and will include our responsibilities on fleet services. And then you can see the, the new operations, they're going to start moving things in immediately after you approve that agreement on the 2nd and start hiring the staff to run the facility, and then a couple of grand opening and open for business dates there for you later this year.
And, and I would assume part of the increase would be staffing as it is everywhere?
Yes, yes.
If I'm incorrect, you would?
Yes.
The new facility is going to take quite a bit more staff.
Well, it's, it's, it's triple the size and has, has surgical opportunities, and yes, so the service delivery is significantly enhanced.
Well, it's a phenomenal building too, so it'll be a great amenity to our citizens and the closeness for everybody. It'll be great.
Hours of operation.
Yeah.
And wages is probably?
Wages, yes.
Doubled almost, I bet.
Yes.
I wouldn't be too shocked to hear that for sure.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone.
Matt, question maybe for you and even the manager. We've talked about some wild animal issues, including deers and whatever, you know, that have to be picked up that have been struck by vehicles or whatever. I occasionally get calls from people that have concerns about some other wild animals that are more predatory, specifically coyotes and bobcats that are showing up around Des Moines, and people seem to have great concern about it for their own animals and, you know, what it may mean to small children and whatever. How are we handling those kinds? We turn them over to the police and say, hey, there's a bobcat out there, and, and what do we do about it?
I believe that's usually a, a DNR, but maybe Joe could address that question.
Yeah, not to belabor the point, but I believe last year, Councilman Gotta, we, we talked about the city enacting an educational plan. That's really what we need to be talking about, educating our citizens on how to properly interact with wildlife, making them aware that they're there, and if there are any problematic animals, it's an individual animal, it's not a species, it's not an eradication, it's not a removal, unless it's an individual animal that has demonstrated it no longer can live safely within the community, then we would look at the possibilities of removing those individual animals. But we, we'd very much love the opportunity to reengage council, you know, on that effort. We've got some great partners that are willing to do that work at this level and implement an effective management strategy for predators that reside within the city of Des Moines, because they're here, they're not going anywhere. We need to implement a plan, and we'd be happy to talk with you again, Councilman Gotta, or anybody else that would be interested in taking another look at that, that plan.
Typically what, what I found out is most of the complaints would be during mating season.
Absolutely, yeah.
That's where you see a, a big jump, where they're out in the neighborhoods and they're... It does frighten a lot of people that have smaller animals. But yeah, you, you've, you've had some good ideas, and if, I'd be happy to revisit it with others, if any, anyone else is interested and had the same, have the same complaints. Sounds like we all have, but.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Manager, let's move on.
All right. Thank you. Second topic we have for this morning is an update on the workings of our Civil and Human Rights Department. We have a very active commission that, that has some goals and objectives of their own that they'd like to share with you. Then we also, but before that, we'll have Mitzi talk about the casework that's also involved with the department. So I'll turn it over to Mit.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Mayor County, members of council, colleagues and commissioners in the room. Thank you for your time this morning. Before I jump into our presentation, I did just want to bridge civil and human rights work with what we just heard from the ARL. It might not be obvious to, to everyone that they are connected, but they are significantly intertwined. And Councilmember Mandelbaum, he had asked about ordinances or policies that maybe the city can take a look at, and I wanted to bring something up through a civil rights lens. Des Moines does have breed-specific legislation, and there have been now multiple law review articles. One of them that I highly recommend is called The Black Man's Dog, and I can share that with you all if you're interested. But these law review articles link race-based bias to the histories of where these pitbull specific, breed-specific legislation came from. And it's really fascinating when you really start to think about the history of these laws throughout the country and the link to that race-based bias. So I did just want to bridge that for a second there before I jump in. Thank you.
I know we've previously had discussion about perhaps removing the breed-specific ordinance. I mean, I, I continue to be open to further discussion on that, and that, that's an interesting, interesting angle to that specific ordinance.
So I do want to take a moment to acknowledge our commissioners and our advisory group members. As you know, the Civil and Human Rights Department investigates complaints of discrimination, but we also promote equity and justice through community engagement, advocacy, education, and a big part of that work is done by our volunteer commissioners and our advisory groups, so we really appreciate them. In the room, we do have our chair, Dr. Negus Rudisson Imetep, and you'll hear from him in a little bit. Sonia Reyes, our vice chair, was unavailable today. Chris Esperston, our secretary, was also unavailable. Veronica Oya is one of our longer-serving commissioners. She was also unfortunately unavailable to be here this morning. But we do have some of our newer commissioners with us who have been amazing, who have jumped right into this work. Nate Nyswanger, Kathleen McDonnell, and Brett Burke, who you'll also hear from a little bit later. So jumping into our investigations, this past fiscal year, we fielded over 1,200 calls. A lot of these calls, what we do is provide resources, provide referrals, things that, you know, are not jurisdictional to us, but we can certainly connect folks to where they, where they can find help. We did bring in 52 intakes last fiscal year. An intake is when somebody contacts us with a potentially jurisdictional charge. And so last year, I think we had about 22, so we more than doubled that, so that's great. And intakes can come in through an online form that we have. We have it in English and in Spanish. We also have the forms available at our office to take home and fill out, or fill out in our office, and we can assist with that. Or folks can just call us and walk in, and it can be just a verbal intake. Intakes also happen through our partner agencies, so sometimes HUD will send someone over to us, and we'll consider that an intake for us. If someone goes to HUD and says, this is happening to me in Des Moines, they'll just transfer them over to us. We did file 22 complaints, and so that means that we had an intake, it was jurisdictional, we wrote it up, and the person came and signed it, and we served it onto a respondent. So now that's an official complaint, it's an official investigation. Sometimes folks will come to us, it's jurisdictional, we can take it, but they'll say, you know, I got it off my chest, I don't really want to proceed, I just wanted to talk to somebody about it. And so that intake now will not become a complaint, even though it's, it's jurisdictional. And we closed 10 cases last fiscal year, and we'll go over what those cases looked like in just a second. So our investigations last fiscal year, majority employment, which is pretty standard for, for these types of agencies, then housing, then a handful of public accommodation. So our closures last fiscal year, like I said, we closed 10. I'm going to start with the age because I think it's the most glaring, right? Those are old cases that we see up there. That's, that's not what we want to see, but we did work through that backlog of aged cases. And so our oldest case right now is a 2022 case. So we did move cases, we had cases from 2018, and we did work through all of those. So our case closures are a little bit low for last year, and part of that is because of these old cases that we had to kind of restart and work through. And so for next fiscal year, this fiscal year, we'll see our, our case closures go up pretty significantly, and we'll, we'll see that in a little bit too. Closures by, oh, you know what? That says protected class, but that's closures by type. So we can close cases in many different ways. We have one court settlement, so that means we found reasonable cause for discrimination. It went to court and it settled before trial. Conciliation, that one is a pre-cause conciliation. So we try to settle our cases throughout the entire life of the case, right? As soon as it comes in as a complaint, we will start working with the parties to try to have a voluntary settlement. And that's what that one is. That conciliation was actually a testing case, so there was no complainant, we were the complainant, and the relief that we sought was a policy for this respondent, a non-discrimination policy that we helped them draft, that is now in place, and then also training. So they went through a non-discrimination training as part of this conciliation. Then we have a few no cause determinations. One cause, which did actually end up conciliating before we went to court, and I think that one conciliated for a little over $20,000. This was a housing case. Administrative release, so sometimes folks will say, I no longer want to... Administrative release. So sometimes folks will say, I no longer want to proceed with your process. I'd rather go straight to court. I have an attorney. I'd rather proceed that way. And so we'll close it out so that they can proceed that way. And then administrative can be a couple of different things. Withdrawals are the most common administrative closure. So sometimes folks will say, I have an attorney. My attorney is negotiating with respondent. We're going to do a private settlement without you. So just withdraw, just close my case. I'm going to handle it separately. Administrative can also be failure to locate. And so that happens pretty regularly, unfortunately, is that we can no longer locate the complainant. The phone is disconnected. The mail is being sent back. You know, we'll do our due diligence kind of online, trying to find folks. But if we can no longer find them and we can't proceed without them, then we'll just have to close it. So what our cases look like today, today we have 16 open investigations. We do have one reasonable cause case currently with legal under review. Our oldest case is 400 days and our median case age is 194 days. Last year, our median case age was 474, I want to say. Yes, 474 days. So we've cut that down pretty significantly for our median case age. So that's exciting. That was really our goal for last year was to push through those, those aged cases. And now our goal for this coming year is to, you know, not let cases get that old and then continue with these closures. So so far this fiscal year, we've already closed eight cases. Cases, you know, when they're not as old will move a lot quicker. So we can get something in and get it out, you know, within 120 days sometimes. Which is what we hope to do. So that's why that number is so high already. Also, that number reflects some investigations that were actually wrapped up last fiscal year. But the actual order wasn't sent out until after July 1st. Or the appeal period took us over July 1st. So that's why we have so many closures so far already, which is great.
When you became the, the director?
Yeah, we had a lot of.
Didn't get done when, before you came?
Yeah, so they, some had been processed to a certain extent and then had kind of just gotten stale and had been sitting for a little bit. So we had to, and some of them we could just pick up where they left off and some of them we had to start over. It had just been too long. So another thing that we do is community outreach. So we did have our symposium, which I know a lot of you attended. It was virtual last year. This year it will be in-person at Drake University, October 27th. And those tickets are already on sale. We did host, I believe it was about 12 community conversations last summer between commissioners and the two advisory groups. And some of what came out of those conversations is what you'll hear in a little bit for our, the recommendations that commissioners will be making today. Civil Rights in Seas was a program targeted to third to eighth graders. And it was a partnership with Monsoon and we brought youth together to do gardening projects and activities and talked about, celebrated civil rights victories. So that was really fun to do with the kids. Then our Polk County Housing Trust Fund, or yeah, Housing Trust Fund Collaboration. Back in April, I think a lot of you were also present for Fair Housing Week. We partnered with them on multiple events and that's a, that's been a really strong partnership. We love working with them. And then we do have our fair housing training available. And so this is connected to one of our Bridging the Gap initiatives. But there is a forum on our website where folks can request fair housing training, or they can just give us a call, shoot us an email. And we do provide this training to the community. You know, part of what we want to do is, you know, we're neutral, right? We're a neutral fact finding agency and we want to serve potential respondents the same way we serve our potential complainants. And if a respondent gives us a call and says, hey, I want my staff trained on, what do I do if someone walks in here with a service animal? You know, I want to do the right thing. We absolutely want to provide that service and provide that training to folks and give that kind of technical assistance. So we do have, our employment training isn't quite on the website yet, but it is available. So that will be starting to be advertised soon. But our fair housing training is on the website now. So Commissioner Oya, as I said, unfortunately was unable to make it today. She is our RIAS liaison. RIAS is our Refugee and Immigrant Advisory Group. A couple of things that they have done this last year, they did host community conversations. They've been working with a contact at DART to try to provide better services to refugee and immigrant communities. Trying to work through transportation barriers and access barriers. One of the big projects that they've worked on that we're going to talk about shortly is the language access policy. They met for many months, weekly actually. So they met pretty regularly working on a language access policy for the city. That's also one of the Bridging the Gap initiatives. They did onboard four new members this year, which is great. And they are planning some housing conversations coming up soon. So as part of getting information and data for the language access policy, we pulled city records for language line, and this looks old now, but we pulled this last fall. Language line. And so throughout all city departments, except police, because police uses language link. And I can share a couple of numbers for them too. But for language line used by other city departments, 110 calls for interpretation throughout that 12-month period. 18 languages interpreted, over 1,200 minutes of interpretation and nine average calls per month. So it's certainly a service that is used. As I said, the police department uses language link. And in the year 2022, they had almost 2,000 calls for interpretation services. Almost 15,000 minutes of interpretation and 30 languages interpreted. So it's certainly something that is needed and, and used regularly in our community. So back to the city.
Question on the language line. Are those resident-initiated calls or, or is that something where there's an interaction for a service and and the city staff initiate the, the translation call?
It's an interaction for service and city staff will call. We have a code that we put in. And then, but it'll be, usually it's over the phone. If we have an appointment or something ahead of time, we can try to schedule things, but it's usually just someone walks in, we call them and have it on speakerphone.
Right. So if someone is not accessing services because of the language barrier and they don't even know that we have this as an option.
Exactly.
There, there's perhaps a lot more need or use for this, but people just don't know it's available.
Right. And so one of the things that we talked about with the language access policy is having these, you know, I speak cards and you all might have seen those around in different departments. So folks can let you know, you know, what language it is that, that they need the services in. But if they don't know that that's there, you know, that's certainly a community outreach piece that needs to be included with, with this.
Could you, just, so there's a different service that the police department uses? I, I didn't quite get the, the grand. Can you explore that just a little bit more?
So I actually don't have the history of why it's a different service. I was just looking for data for numbers of how, what languages, how many calls. And I learned throughout that research that they use this different service, but I don't know the history of why there's a different service there.
And do the, is there a need to transfer a person from one to the other, just on the basis of their type of inquiry?
I'm not sure I understand.
So, so everything that's the police department translation line is police-related? Or, or could something, because they know that there's a translation service, could that call really be something more that you should be handling?
I see. Oh, that's a great question. I don't know the answer to that. I guess I had made the assumption that these were kind of in-the-field calls. But I don't actually know the answer to that. I can certainly try to find it.
I find it interesting that we're a city of this size and yet we have two different translation services. And so why aren't they? Well, maybe they don't need to be talking to each other. And I don't know what languages, but just curious about.
Cover the same languages.
Yeah, just curious why they're not the same, but.
Let me research that with the police department and the other non-police services to see if there's overlap or an opportunity.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. And you know, I don't know if language line is 24 hours and I wonder if that might play into it, but I really, I really don't know.
It might also be the particulars of the police public safety aspects is not as simple as a translation possibly. So let, let me find that out for cer- certain.
Yeah, kind of technical language. I know there's medical services too that are, that are very specific. So that could be part of it. The departments that use language line the most were Human Resources and Human Rights, followed by Finance, Parks, and then our City Clerk's Office. And the most requested languages, Spanish was by far the most requested. And then followed by Somali, Vietnamese, Swahili, Burmese, and Karen. And so RIAS did put together a language access survey that was shared with all city staff. They received 362 responses. And there was a portion to write in comments and I put these up here because these are the comments that we saw multiple times come up. And the theme here is having bilingual staff to be able to better serve the residents of Des Moines. Of course, having an interpretive service is, you know, helpful and we need that if we don't have bilingual staff. But something that kept coming up was just the, the ease of accessing services in your own language, right? The comfort and the trust that comes with that. And so having bilingual staff or multilingual staff was something that, that we saw come up pretty regularly. The other one, excuse me. The other one that we saw come up regularly was training. Several folks shared that, you know, they hadn't really received training on language line, or they did kind of way back when they started and they don't remember because it's not something that maybe they use all the time. So making sure that that kind of training is in place and that's something that will be in the, in the language access policy and plan also. So we're going to jump into our first recommendation and that is for city manager to adopt a language access policy for the city. The language access policy will provide meaningful access to city services and resources and programs to our English language learning residents. And there's also provisions there for hearing, vision, or speech impaired residents. The policy, the way it's written, and it has gone through legal review and it's been through the EOAC, I do want to acknowledge before I started, this policy draft existed and it, there was a lot of work put into it with the EOAC. Manisha's office, the Equity Office, you know, multiple, multiple partners and city staff have, have put time and effort into this. So I do want to acknowledge that. And so the, the policy will require enforcement-based documents to be translated. This is when the city is sending out letters that have some kind of consequence attached, right? If you don't respond to this, something can happen. There's going to be some kind of adverse action or potential for adverse action. So those types of enforcement-based documents would need to be translated. And then, you know, paired with that, the same thing for verbal interpretation. If there's some kind of interaction where there's some kind of enforcement-based communication, that should also be interpreted. And then we did also include a date for the ask. So adopting the language access policy by October 15th. And then once the policy is adopted, departments will have to work on their own plans to implement that policy. And it's going to look a little bit differently for each department, just based on the types of services and their audiences. So we do want to have some kind of core group of staff that can work with the departments to find cohesive plans that of course take into account each department's needs. RIAS has provided a base plan that can then be kind of molded to, to each department. And we, we hope to see those departmental plans by springtime. Right. And I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Burke to go over our LGBTQ advisory council. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Brett Burke. I was a previous LGBTQ advisory council member and I'm a current commissioner. And as a previous LGBTQ advisory council member, I just want to share some of the progress that we've made over the past year as well as some of the initiatives that we look forward to in the next upcoming year. So the LGBTQ advisory council does three things. We advocate for LGBTQ people and civil rights. We provide assistance to the commission on their different decisions and then we educate the community about the commission. So really I'm here to celebrate what the, the work that the LGBTQ advisory council has done over the past year. We're very proud of them as volunteers to our city. One of the things that they did was have community dialogues across the city in three different issue areas, communities. And then the third was public safety. Throughout those different dialogues, they talked to community members, you know, all across the city about the issues that they really care about. And they came up with a bunch of different recommendations to the commission that the commission then heard and then now we're talking to today. They had two very successful events. One was Transgender Day of Visibility. The other one was National Coming Out Day. And I see some folks here today who attended those events. Thank you so much for showing up and coming out for our community. These events are very important to just be visible as an LGBTQ person in our community. It's really important for us to be out, to share that, you know, that we're being our authentic selves within our city. Be a role model for today's youth. The next one is the Human Rights Campaign Score. This one, I want to read a quote from one of our LGBTQ advisory council members, Brandon Paulson. So Brandon Paulson says, "The MEI, the Municipal Equality Index, examines how inclusive municipal laws, policies, and services are for LGBTQ people who live and work in Des Moines. In a competitive, growth-driven world where we see cities compete for talent, resources, and more diverse policies, the MEI is a good benchmark for how cities bear in terms of their level of inclusion for LGBTQ people. Obtaining a perfect score has been a priority over the past few years. But every year, the MEI changes their different metrics. So it's hard to hit that kind of moving benchmark target. But because of the efforts of the LGBTQ advisory council, as well as the Equity Office and the City Manager's Office, we have been able to raise our MEI score from 88 to 96 in just one year because of that targeted effort. So jumping eight points is a huge deal because, you know, LGBTQ people across the states, they'll look at Des Moines as, you know, in this list of different rankings from all cities, they'll see Des Moines as high up there as prioritizing human and civil rights and LGBTQ plus-affirming policies. So overall, we have a fantastic story to share here, Brandon says, but we have a lot of work to do to reach 100 points in the MEI in the future. And then lastly, but certainly not least, we have this law enforcement survey. We had a confidential survey to better understand the experiences of LGBTQ plus people as they interface with law enforcement. And the LGBTQAC wanted to organize this survey because many people were afraid to file a civil rights complaint with the city. And it was important to hear from them if we were to act on their behalf to promote a more equitable city for our residents. And so the LGBTQAC heard from many different people through that public survey, which they would be more than willing to share during another public meeting. So this concludes this section about the LGBTQ advisory council. We're very proud of the work that they've done over the last year. And we're looking forward to continuing to partner with them over the next upcoming year. So next, I just wanted to talk about one of the policy recommendations that we had coming out of the LGBTQ advisory council dialogues as well as the RIAS dialogue. So this was kind of a joint recommendation that both of our advisory council, advisory councils had. So this was kind of a joint recommendation that both of our advisory councils had. And one of the things that we heard from our residents was that navigating the programs and services of the city can kind of be like navigating a maze. They're not really sure who to go to for what, and because everybody has very busy lives, different levels of access to city services, we thought it would be great to have somebody who could interface with the community more directly, especially with underrepresented communities. This would be a trusted person who would already be a part of the community, but could be somebody who is trained on the services that already exist. So when somebody reaches out to the city, this can be the point person to navigate that for them. This person, oh, another recommendation that came from the dialogues was that people want to have more of these conversations with the city. People are really hungry to talk to the city, especially those from underrepresented communities who are, you know, challenged to be in spaces like this, or they have a hard time like showing up to community meetings for whatever reason it is. They want to have more opportunities to have these kinds of community conversations to ensure that their voices are heard. So this community liaison position would be, you know, offering navigational support to community members. They would also be getting that community input through community conversations and funneling it to city council and to the city manager's office. And then, because they're in this very, you know, frontline position, navigating resources for people, they could also, you know, do those systems tweaks to make things more accessible for people in different steps of the way. So this is a very broad position description based off of our community dialogues, of course, but we wanted to bring that forth to you as something that we learned from the dialogues and something that the community wants. So thank you very much. That's my time. Any questions about those? All right, thank you.
Good morning, council members. My name is Dr. Nagus Rudisson. I'm HOTEP, and I am talking to you today about issues with public safety. We know that among public administrators, practitioners, that public safety is paramount. It's our, our goal and our objective to make everything safe for everyone. What we have come up with is with our recommendations, that we want to collaborate with community groups to create a community review board, and keep the community involved throughout all the stages of the board creation and implementation. And our recommendations will include the Civil and Human Rights Commission throughout the creation process, and provide for representation from the Civil and Human Rights Commission on the board. That, that is our goal. I'm going to mental health. I need to go back there. Just leave right there. Is there any comments or questions in regards to the request? If not, I'll have a seat. Thank you.
Let me ask you a quick question about, go back to that previous slide if you would. That community review board, that would be separate from the Civil and Human Rights Commission, a different piece, or a subset of, or-
I'm inclined to believe we would prefer a subset of the, of the board, in a sense.
Okay.
But under the Civil and Human Rights?
A subset of the board, or, I mean, so Iowa City and Cedar Rapids have community review boards.
Yes.
Are you talking community review boards that would be, would have a similar purpose to those groups, I assume?
Absolutely.
Okay. So that would be a separate entity, but with representation from, representation from the Civil and Human Rights Commission?
Commission, yes.
Okay.
That's it. All right, thank you.
Thank you, and I want to be mindful of time. We just have one more recommendation to share, and unfortunately, Commissioner Reyes couldn't be with us today. But the, the last recommendation that you'll find in our annual report is that council passes citywide ban on conversion therapy, specifically targeting minors. So I have a clear definition of what conversion therapy is, and it refers to this range of discredited practices aimed at changing someone's, usually a minor's, sexual orientation or gender identity. Conversion therapy laws prohibit licensed mental health practitioners from subjecting LGBTQ minors to these harmful practices. Most of these laws you will see are targeted to minors and do have religious exemptions. That's not necessarily our recommendation, but I did want to provide that context and that information for how generally we see these types of laws. Conversion therapy often includes techniques such as shaming, hypnosis, inducing vomiting, and electric shocks. Research has certainly shown that conversion therapy poses dangerous health risks, and actually, so we do have an article that I'm happy to share with folks, published in the American Journal of Public Health, that shows or found that youth who are subjected to this practice are twice as likely to report having attempted suicide, and more than two and a half times as likely to report multiple suicide attempts in the past year. There is an additional peer-reviewed article published in JAMA Pediatrics, or the Journal of American Medical Association Pediatrics, that found that the cost, I want to get the full amount to you here, the cost of, the societal cost to, for these practices is over $9 billion, when you look at the extent of damage that it does to mental health in our youth. So I thought that was really interesting to bring in that economic perspective, and I'm, again, I'm happy to share those two articles with you. We did include some other cities in the Midwest who have done this. Generally, these bans are statewide, but there are about 20 states that have cities or municipalities that have instituted these bans themselves, and there's some examples up there, and we do have an example close by in Davenport as well.
So I'm, I've been supportive of a conversion therapy ban. One thing I want to understand, I know Davenport has had theirs in place for quite a while. I believe Lynn County has one in place. Waterloo adopted and then rescinded?
Yes.
Did they, because they, they were going to be challenged, did they draft theirs in a way that was significantly different from Lynn County and from the city of Davenport?
You know, I'm not sure. I did see that it was recently repealed, and they were challenged on it, but I'm not sure if the drafting was different. That's certainly something we can, we can look at.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be curious why they were, why they were challenged and why Lynn County and Davenport were not. I mean, maybe it could be as simple as there was a local provider who was practicing, I mean, but I, I'm, I'm curious, because it's clear that, that conversion therapy can be drafted in a way that is going to withstand scrutiny if there are this many communities around the Midwest, including in Iowa, that have adopted, effectively adopted bans that have stayed in place, so.
Yeah, and so my understanding is that, and I've actually experienced this in another jurisdiction, there are national groups that monitor this type of legislation, and will send these letters threatening legal action to any municipality that passes one of these types of ordinances, and I think some municipalities are more likely than others to be a little more, you know, conservative in what they're willing to risk, maybe. But I do, it wouldn't surprise me if these other cities listed here, I can't speak for sure if they did, but it wouldn't surprise me if all of them received a similar threatening letter that Waterloo received.
Okay. So it's, at this point, a threat that has not been fully litigated, is what you're saying?
That's my understanding. From the outside, I don't have kind of deep connections there, but my understanding is that it was just a threat. There has not been anything filed, and as of at least maybe 10 days ago, there was nothing filed, because we did search the court records to make sure.
Okay. So essentially, it's just a question of the will of elected officials to be willing to stand on something like this.
I think that's a big part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
All right, thank you. Appreciate the updates. Mr. Manager?
Yeah.
Anything? All right, we don't have any closed session? We do?
We do.
All right. So council members, we do have a closed session at 3:30, and for others, we have a regular council meeting, and which will start at 5, but be here a little before that. All right? With that, this means adjourned. Thank you.